Again, my apologies, we now have a quorum. So I'd like to welcome you to the June 24 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And I would ask if you have pagers or cellphones, if you would turn those off or silence them at this time so that they don't ring while we're conducting business. If you are not the applicant and you're here to address us on a case, if you would sign up, sheets like this are available on the table outside the chambers, and if you would give them to our secretary here, we'd be happy to hear you. And at this time, we will bypass approval of minutes because we don't have a quorum for that. And go to continuance requests.
We have three uncontested requests for continuances. Items 23 through 25, these are C 6212, C 6221, and PUD 1416, all requested to continue until July the 8th.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about items 23, 4, or 5 on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuances.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and they're approved.
New request for continuance, we have item 3 and 4 have both been withdrawn. This is PC 10250. And item C 6220 have both been withdrawn. Item 8 is PV 71, request to continue until July the 8th. Item 10, C 6226, request to continue until July the 8th. And item 11, which is SPUD 552, request to defer until August the 12th.
Again, did anyone come to talk to us about any of the items just read on our agenda, 3, 4, 8, 10, or 11? Okay.
I'll move the withdrawals and the continuances.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve the withdrawals and continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Do we have any other continuance requests from the public?
Yes, sir. I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill Surveying Engineering, representing the applicant on item number 7, SPUD 568. And we have this morning met with the representatives of the Quail Creek Homeowners Association, and they'd like to have a larger neighborhood meeting before this is heard, which we're going to try to do Monday or Tuesday next week. And so we'd like to request a continuance to the July 8th Planning Commission hearing for item number 7, SPUD 568.
Is there anyone here today to talk to us about item 7 that would not be in agreement with continuing it to July 8th?
Move the continuance until July 8th.
We have a motion and second to continue this item, number 7, to July 8th. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much.
We can go back to approve of the minutes now. We have a quorum for that.
Move approval of minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. And the minutes are approved. Next item is the consent docket.
Two items on the consent docket. Item 1 is C 6227, which is a final plat of Country Place Editions, Section 9. And item 2, which is SN 068, which is to consider a resolution changing the name of Southwest 152nd Place to, from Conwy Drive to Stillwin Drive.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about items 1 or 2 on our agenda? Okay. Move the Quail Creek Consent Docket. We have a motion and second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that is approved. First item for a public hearing would be number 5 then, I think.
It would be. Items 3 and 4 have been withdrawn. Item 5 is C 6208, which is a revised preliminary plat of Ironstone, located south of Northwest 164th Street and east of Portland Avenue and Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Ritchie. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for Ironstone. Today, real briefly, I'd like to first go over the history of the project, what's gotten us to this point, and then share with you the information I've gathered regarding the capacity of the regional section line road network. There's slides up on the screen of 14 slides to run through real briefly. The exact same slides are in the packets that I've handed out to you. In July of 2008, the applicant purchased the land, the quarter section that's highlighted on this first slide. At that time, the entire quarter section was zoned R1. In September of 2008, we began the PUD application process. Now, on the second slide, PUD 1382 was approved by the Planning Commission that December 2008 after four months of negotiations with the city. During these negotiations, it was agreed that all homes in the track C, the residential side of it, would have a minimum of 70% brick, masonry, drive it, rock, stucco, wood, or other similar exterior finish. In addition to this, the applicant intends to build a brick wall all along the Northwest 164th front edge. And I don't think my laser pointer is working on the screen. There it is. All along the north side of the property, there will be a brick entry wall. The agreed-upon PUD allows for up to five homes per acre. The application before you today is for 4.6 homes per acre, which is 8% less than that allowed by the PUD. The third slide addresses the connection points. I've highlighted them in green. The applicant has agreed to the four access points shown here in green as requested by the city. The two access points on the Northwest 164th, the north side of the project, will both be built with Phase 1, as shown in the Phase 1 application for the final packet that's set to be heard by this commission July the 8th. Now, on the fourth slide, the applicant intends to develop this construction, this project in three phases, as shown here. Phase 1 will have 125 lots. Phase 2 will have 139 lots. And Phase 3 will have 157 lots to take it out to the fully developed condition. The two northern entryways will be built with Phase 1, and the two southern entryways will be built with Phase 3. Common areas, this application proposes four recreational open space common areas. These are common areas A, B, C, and D. A is in the first phase that you'll see July the 8th. The other three large common areas will be parts of Phases 2 and then a final phase of 3. The common areas are positioned the way they are in order to provide a safely fenced area with minimum exposure to traffic, also to concentrate activities in these four centralized locations for families with different age children. If you look at a couple, say B, C, or D, well, A also, they're all positioned next to a cul-de-sac. This was done so that the common areas are sized to allow for one or two junior soccer fields, and a playground, and sitting areas. This will allow parents to watch their older child practice soccer while their younger child plays on a playground, all while the parents can be sitting on a bench or something closer to the cul-de-sac, and this limits the exposure of the children to the traffic areas. Also, traffic through the cul-de-sac should be traveling really slow anyway. Slide 6 addresses the average lot size throughout the development. My pointer isn't working on the screen, so I'll do my best to explain. All of the internal lots, so all of the internal lots, everything except for the lots along Regency Point. So all of those internal lots, the city's minimum lot size applies, and that's 6,000 square feet. But that's as small as those lots could be. The average of these lots that we have proposed in that internal portion of the addition is 6,800. That's 800 square feet over and above the city's minimums. Now, about the lots along that east line, the right side of the development, up next to the existing phases of Regency Point and the proposed phases of Regency Point. First of all, we've positioned two of the large common areas over there to try to minimize the effect of numerous houses backing up to Regency Point. The lot size requirement for those lots that back up to Regency Point would be 7,200 square foot because of the city's rule of minimum adjacent lot size. The lots that we have proposed there are 7,600 square feet, so they're 400 square feet in excess of the required minimum. On the seventh slide, to conform with the commission's policy on garage fronts, the applicant proposes, first, the standard commitment to the front yard trees. Second, the curvilinear design shown here that results in differing setbacks for each home along the street. If you'll notice on your paper copy, it's probably easier to read than the overhead, the setback house to house varies between five foot to two foot. So there's a substantial offset between garage fronts or building front or home fronts. And third, the garage front, on the, the garage front and home front of all the corner lots, so the end of block lots, will face different streets. So if you have the garage facing the east-west street, the home will face the north-south street. This summarizes how the applicant has brought the project to this point through redesign negotiations and compromises. Now, if we go to the next slide, I can fill you in on what I've been able to find out about the regional traffic capacity and schedule as far as reconstruction and widening. The criteria the city staff uses for widening a two-lane road is 7,000 ADT. Below that, the street doesn't qualify to be on a bond issue added to the widening schedule. Above that, it does. Now, summarize what I've found out regarding the issues of the capacity. As I began to investigate, I wanted first to confirm how severe the traffic issues were in this region, and I did this by speaking to the relevant offices at the city. The mayor's action line is really kind of a clearinghouse for citizen complaints, not that the action line catalogs or registers them all, but they do enter them into the Hanson data system and then route them to the appropriate department. Beth Krauts with the, with the action line states, she, she did run a report for me. She states that of the 100 citizen complaints received from this region, meaning east of Portland, north of Memorial, and inside the city limits, from the, from the 100 citizen complaints received from this region regarding traffic and street issues during the last year, none of the complaints have dealt with traffic congestion or requests that roads be widened. As I said, she enters that into the city database known as Hanson, and if a call were to be received about congestion or requesting widening, it would be given a code of 183 and sent to the appropriate department. The other, so that says that there haven't been a lot of public calls asking for widening. We're all aware that the ADT, the traffic, is there. That's why in 2000, 2007, the bond issues allowed for widening of all these section line roads throughout this northern portion of Ward 8. The other primary entry point for such citizen complaints is the city engineering department, namely, Mr. George Storm, because he oversees that CIP project, and he receives all the calls that are forwarded to him about these types of complaints. I've been authorized to quote Mr. Storm of the city engineer's office stating that he is the, he is his office's point of contact for citizen complaints regarding streets, and that he's, he has received very few, if any, requests for the city to widen streets in this region. This slide here in front of you, what I'm trying to demonstrate is that this, this project that's proposed, Ironstone, then the green one north is the portion of Rose Creek that contributes to 164th, and then Regency Point contributes to 164th. These three projects fall within the northern portion of Ward 8, located north of Memorial and the John Kilpatrick Turnpike, and east of Portland Avenue, which is also State Highway 74. This project, the Ironstone project, fronts onto 164th. The Northwest 164th has three subdivisions that discharge to two points. I've tried to use a large, heavy-weighted arrow to emphasize that all of the traffic coming from Ironstone, Regency Point, and Rose Creek all come onto 164th. And then the only two options they have are to go west to Highway 74, east to May. The large arrows emphasize that all the traffic from these three subdivisions are going either east or west. These medium-sized arrows that go south from those two intersections show that most of this Northwest 164th traffic is heading south towards the urban center via Memorial Road, the Turnpike, and Hefner Parkway. The smaller arrows going north, east, and west from those two major intersections show that smaller volumes of traffic go those directions as they just intermingle between the, that, that portion of Ward 8. I'd like to point out that May Avenue has been under construction for the last year, as have many of the other streets to the east. What this does is it has forced traffic onto other streets, causing an imbalance to the flow of traffic on Northwest 164th Street and others. Because where people would typically try to get out of their subdivision the most expedient way, then take the most expedient way to either a highway or a place of work or school, now there's a human characteristic of where we try to avoid construction zones, so it's been jumbled a little bit. Slide 9 is the current, this is what's out there right now. Again, Ironstone is shown in the light blue up there, just south of 164th and east of Portland. I've met with the applicant to go through the anticipated construction timeline for this Ironstone project to see when it will actually begin to contribute cars to the street system. Approval of the Ironstone preliminary plat today will begin in approximate 14-month timeline to when Ironstone will contribute its first resident to the street system. So for 14 months, we're not adding any traffic to it. The applicant expects 20 to 30 homes to be built and occupied within 18 months from today. So that's a small percentage of the Phase 1 traffic of 125 homes. Ironstone, Rose Creek is just to the north of the blue section for Ironstone, and Regency Point is just to the east. May, just south of 164th, is now four-laned. The construction was just completed in past weeks, other than the final dressing and sodding. The intersection of May and 164th is now complete, and the signals have been operational for over a week. When they built that intersection, all legs of the intersection were improved so that the new traffic loops could be installed for the signalization. Now, if we jump ahead to the end of this year, still nothing has changed over by Ironstone, but if you look a little further east, now the Penn Avenue section between 150th and 164th that's under construction now will be complete. The portion of 164th east of Penn that's under construction now will be complete. And as we jump forward to the next slide, it represents the end of 2011. The section of Northwest 164th east of May, so now we're back looking at the intersection that's east of the project, and the section of May north of 164th are currently in the construction bidding and contracting phase. They will be under construction later this year. All of these projects are part of the 2000-2007 bond issue that's been in the works for some time. The reconstruction of these section line roads, these two legs of this intersection, will take under a year to complete, according to George Storm in the engineering department. So these two will be completely finished and operational by the end of next year. This is the same time when Ironstone will contribute its first car to the street system. Included in your packets that I, that were sent out to you over the weekend is an ODOT letter from our division engineer, Paul Green. In that letter, he points out that State Highway 74, which after all is our second major way out of the area of Rose Creek, Regency Point, Ironstone, so it's important, he points out that State Highway 74 will be contracted in November of next year, 2011, and construction will begin the following spring of 2012. The construction will be, it's, it's important to point out that the, the light blue line shown west of Portland is the configuration 74 will be built in because the offsetting of the highway to the west means that Portland will, will be open to traffic during the entire construction. Then traffic will be moved over onto the, the western lanes of 74, and the Portland's two-lane asphalt will be removed. Okay, these final three slides depict the designed traffic turning counts. They come directly from the traffic study. And also in your packets that you received last weekend, you have a letter from Dennis Clowers, the city engineer and public works director, that he and his staff agree with the findings of the traffic study previously submitted to the city for the Ironstone development. Again, Phase 1 has 125 homes planned in it. The first house is ready for residence about 14 months from now. 20 to 30 homes within 18 months. And the diagram that you see up here, done by the traffic engineers, reviewed and approved and substantiated by Dennis Clowers and his staff, reflects proper engineering procedure, looking at the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour. And if you'll notice on the, on the right drive, Ironstone Drive, even if there were 125 homes built and operational the very first day, 18 months from now, the engineers only anticipate 20 right turns, 30 left turns, and 10 traffic, 10 cars out on Northwest 164th trying to turn south into the addition. And over at the west road, which is shown here as Ironfire Court, only nine right-hand turns, 14 left-hand turns, and then five and three respectively from the east and west, turning south into the development. So we are after all dealing with a two-lane asphalt road that only presently has four curb cuts on it. One for Rose Creek, one for Rose Creek's maintenance facility, one for Regency Point, and one for a construction entrance just east of Regency Point. So Phase 1 only contributes a small number at the 18-month window, and then full build-out of Phase 1, this is, this is what's shown here. The next slide represents Phase 2. So now we're out three or four years, and we're contributing 82 right-hand turns at the east entry, 14 right-hand turns at the west entrance. And the most number of turns would be the 41, turning south into the development in the morning, and 93 coming in the evening, coming home, traffic coming home. Okay, the last slide is the full development. And again, we have 125 homes living there now. Most of them have two vehicles that are coming and going, but we design, we don't design for 250 cars because there's 125 homes. We design for the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour, so the numbers are much smaller. Now, in closing, I've been authorized to read the following statement from the city engineer and the director of public works. Mr. Clowers, the city engineer, states the following. Regionally, the section line widening and intersection signalization projects currently underway will be sufficient for the full development of the region according to the Oklahoma City Land Use Plan, understanding, of course, that localized development will present the need for site-specific improvements such as entryway signalizations and warranted turn lanes. What that's saying is the city is not so short-sighted that they would go spend all of our tax money widening these streets to ultimately end up with a network of streets that are still inadequate for the full urbanization development of the land. That, I feel, is, is the best argument for the fact that the system is in place, it's getting better, and it, and the system is, is designed and being built to handle the traffic that urbanization in this northern portion of Ward 8 is going to contribute to it. The applicant is, is glad to agree with all the TEs shown on the staff report. TEs 2 and 3 have been revised, but those were read aloud to you at the previous meeting. I'm available to answer any questions you, the commission, might have. And with that, I would respectfully request approval of the application.
Discussion and comment. We have some people signed up to speak, but...
I've got one question. Do you own the property to the east?
I believe you mean to the west, right?
No, to the east.
No, that's Regency Point. Could you go back to about slide 6?
Well, you've got connectivity on Phase 3.
Let's get the exhibit up there. Two, two more.
It's on, on your page 4.
There we go.
Okay. Well, that connectivity is there on 159th, I believe it is. It runs into a lot over there. Has that been worked out?
Correct. It's, it's, the, the process there is whoever preliminary plats first kind of picks the location. But what I did in choosing that location is I contacted the engineer for that development several months ago and asked for a mutually agreeable location for that interconnection. Their lots are about 80-foot wide, so we've positioned it so that they can get an even number of lots in there. That also happens to be the historic low point for stormwater discharge, so it's in their best interest that it be located there so that they can discharge according to how they're supposed to for the engineering department, and so that we can receive their stormwaters at the, at the correct location, too.
My next question, you, do you own the property to the west?
Oh, and I didn't answer the first question. We don't own the land to the east. It's Regency Point, and yes, we own it to the west.
So there's no problem with what you're doing on the...
None at all.
The second...
None.
Okay.
None.
James?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, I, could you restate your findings on the time period of when 164th Street would be improved? And what would the improvements be?
164th, because there was a substantial amount of undeveloped land at the time the bond issues were slated and approved, was lower on the schedule. The city engineers department stated that 2015 is when 164th will be rebuilt. By that point, we'll probably be into or right before our, our Phase 2, and that's the reasoning for when we met with Dennis Clowers, and the recommendation in the traffic report was that the developer bear the cost of a widening for a left turn lane. We met with Dennis and said, it makes more sense than us building that, and then along comes 2015, and you tear it out and rebuild it to full standard for the developer. If we're so close ahead of the 2015, like a few months before the 2015, it would make more sense for the developer to just bear the cost of that additional widening and do it one time with the rebuilding of 150, or 164th.
Okay.
Did I, did I explain that well?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the developer is agreed to put it in when it's required, even, even if now. But city staff, the traffic study, we've all agreed that with the two entryways, it's just not needed right now because the traffic counts are so low 18 months from now and two years from now. So as we get closer to 2015, we wanted logic to prevail and not go build it and then tear it out...
Yeah.
...a number of weeks later.
Okay.
The same scenario is, is true with the, the traffic signal that's, that's warranted ultimately. Once we have Phase 2 built, and now we're ready to do Phase 3, 164th has likely been widened by then, and the developer understands that a traffic signal is warranted. The traffic study shows that now. But it says in the traffic study, and Dennis Clowers agreed, that it makes more sense to determine then, at that point in the future, is the signal warranted at the main entryway or over at the west entryway where it can benefit the apartments and the commercial area, too? Because we don't want to end up with a situation where we've got two so closely together. Two mid-block signals is not a good formula.
Okay.
It actually adds to congestion. Traffic agreed with that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, what is the average width of your lots, of the interior lots?
I didn't run an exhibit on that, but I can say confidently that the... I didn't run an exhibit on that, but I can say confidently that the average width is between 52 and 55 feet. We have some that are 60. We do have some that are 50. But the area is made up in having extra depth, bigger backyards, those kinds of things. And then all along Regency Point, the lots are wider and deeper to meet the rule.
Okay. With that in mind, what provisions can you make to adhere to or incorporate some of the work we've done on the garage fronts? We gave a number of scenarios, and I think you're familiar with that document now, right?
Correct.
But I'd like to know, what provisions can you provide for within your development for that, other than the ones that you stated on the... You know, the lots on the end, I know you're going to face the driveway in the opposite direction. And I saw your curvilinear where the street curves, but anything?
Those are two of the major ones. Of course, the standard trees that just sell homes, and builders do anyway, but we always cover it with a plat note.
What about pulling the garages back from the face of the...
I'm not...
So we don't cross the sidewalks, and we get the garage fronts back further than the actual plane of the actual house?
The applicant is here. I'm not authorized to make decisions based on that. I would point out that the applicant does very restrictive covenants anyway, and some of that could be covered in the covenants and restrictions.
I'd just like to see a part of it, so we don't get lost in the sauce, because this is quite dense. Even though it's designed to the standards and to our subdivision regulations and beyond that, some, but I just, for it not to get lost with this density. So you might give the staff or your developer and see how we can incorporate that to ensure it.
I've read the guidance document, and that can be accomplished a couple of ways. Just blanket plat rules that talk about staggered garage fronts in relation to the building front. So far as putting a building limit line and a garage front limit line on the plat, it does make sense. I would defer to the applicant if he wants to come up and make a statement about that, but we would ask that the application be approved in its present configuration.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, anything before we hear from protesters?
I'd like to hear from protesting, and I do have some comments.
Okay. We have several people signed up to speak on this item, and I would ask that you not repeat each other. If you have something new to add after you've heard your neighbor speak, we'd be delighted to hear you. Couple of comments. One, the density of this development is permitted by its existing zoning, so we have no control over that. Nor do we have any control over real estate values, even though most of us are very concerned about the value of our homes. That's not something that we can address here. And with those comments, I'd like to hear from Susan Richardson. Give us your name and address, please.
It's Susan Richardson. I live at 16417 Graysand Court. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm not an engineer nor attorney, I'm just a mom, so I'm concerned, and I wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. And I found out that if you're stuck in a traffic jam, there's a number that you can call. I didn't know that we could call a number because Portland's been backed up for quite a while now. One of the things I want to ask the commission, in the traffic study, has it been considered that Regency Point has just started Phase Two, and we have over 150 homes to add to our addition? And from what I understand, Rose Creek, and I spoke to the general manager who is present here today, that they have existing 345 homes. The total that they will build across the street from this high-density development would be a possible 600 total. So we're talking another 250 homes there. So we're talking about 400 homes that the planning commission has already, I assume, since I believe those preliminary plats have been run through this commission, that we've already planned for those, and now we're going to add an additional 440-some homes in an area where the infrastructure is already, it's not in place to support what we have right now. So I wanted to ask the commission, does that traffic study address that need?
My understanding, and Mark will clarify it, is that the traffic study addresses this project alone.
Alone.
Is that correct, Mark? Okay, that answers one question.
Okay. So that is where our concern is. And we've done petition after petition in Regency Point. We've done three petitions. We've wrote a whole packet of letters from Regency Point, Rose Creek, the HLA president of Merrfield. And I don't know if you were able to review that packet, but we are concerned about traffic, safety concerns with having that much congestion on the road. Our main concern is the lack of infrastructure that's already in place. I've sat through two of these hearings where you have reviewed this. The first one, it was voted unanimously no. They came back and dropped, it was either two or 10 houses, depending how you look at it, and they curved the streets. And I believe, yes, the presentation is great today with all the slides and everything, but it still stands. I believe, Ms. Powers, you said at the last hearing, that you have compassion or sympathy for the developer. As do we. We know this land is going to be developed. We ask that you have sympathy for us as homeowners that have already invested in the property and live in that area and are trying to get home and we're stuck in traffic jams. I'll pull out a Regency Point, and I can tell you, where my home sits in Regency Point, there's three ponds on a horseshoe. I sit where I overlook the entrance of Regency from my kitchen and my patio. And I see traffic coming into my neighborhood starting at 6:00 a.m., large trucks with brick deliveries, yard people. You know, there's always something going in and out. So I can't imagine if we start this addition, we're still building in Regency, we're still building across the street in Rose Creek, Merrfield's still building, they're getting ready to shut May down. 164th is not going to be, you know, until, what, 2015 it's not going to be widened? Traffic is zooming. I sat with my daughter this morning at 6:30 in the morning, and traffic is zooming on 164th. I wish I could have videotaped it and showed you. It is a main thoroughfare. And the traffic study was done when people were avoiding the area because May Avenue was so backed up, and people were going a different direction. They were trying not to go on 164th to May. So I don't know how valid the traffic study really is. I'm here today, though, to tell you that, and I've walked the streets of Regency many times with neighbors, getting people to sign our petition, and it is 100% unanimous. They do not want that stubb street that goes into Regency. Our streets are private. Those are public. We already are in compliance with the subrigs. We have an exit in the back that goes to Esperanza. So we already meet the subrigs, and we do not want to set a stubb street to go into our neighborhood. We have private streets, so that street would not be used. The last thing I want to say is, you as the commissioners, I know you're charged with this. This is a difficult task for you to keep the integrity of Oklahoma City and plan it out properly. But they do have, this is one tract of three tracts, if I'm correct. So you have this tract, and then you have a commercial tract on the corner of Portland and 164th, and then an apartment complex is going to come into the area. This area is going to be so overdeveloped by the time all of this is approved that it's going to be impossible to navigate around. So I ask for you, as you make a decision today, I ask you to look 10 years down the road of what it will look like to be in that area, because a lot of people bought houses in Regency and Rose Creek and Merrfield and Woodvine and all the areas around there so that they will be there in 10 years. They're raising kids there, they're retiring there, whatever. But they've already invested their, you know, life into this area. So I ask you, as you make this decision, to have the foresight to look down 10 years and see what we're going to do to this area. Also, what concerns me on that, you were talking, Commissioner Williams, about adhering to the covenants. We have that problem in Regency Point. I don't think there's any way to guarantee that. We've had houses slip through in our neighborhood, and we'll ask our developer, and they're like, "Oh, you know, things slip through all the time." I think that's great that a developer will make those statements, but they can't guarantee that, because we will ask our developer, you know, "Who made that decision?" And they'll, "Oh, it slipped through the crack." And there's nothing you can do once that slab's been poured, you know? So I think that is something to address as well. And I think we have other citizens here. I want you to know that, you know, they have done petition after petition and wrote letter after letter to you guys, and they really want you to know how opposed they are to this. You know, just going to the grocery store can be a major task in that area. So I really ask you to have sympathy for those that live in that area. Thank you.
Before you step away, just to answer a couple of your questions. One, you've generated a great deal of creative material force, and we have read it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. I will relay that to the residents.
A number of hearings on this item, and when we talked about it the first time, infrastructure was our principal concern.
Yes.
And it would still be mine.
Yes.
And I made that statement when this was continued last time, as a matter of fact, that we are aware of and sympathetic to all of the people who are there now and who are having problems getting in and out to and from work. That's not lost on any of us. I just want you to understand that as we go forward with our discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Renee Ogan, or Ogan, if I pronounced that correctly? If I didn't, I apologize in advance. If you'd give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Renee Ogan. I live at 16432 Graysand Court. Trying not to duplicate what she said. There was a slide on the study of the turn rate going into this Ironstone Development. Personally, I think the estimates are very low. They said they would not allow...
You need to address us and not him.
Okay. They didn't figure on two cars per household. But wouldn't you think that people that are living in these smaller homes probably have two wage earners? They aren't going to carpool, they're going to have two cars per household. So I think there's going to be more cars per unit coming and going. So I'm concerned there about the density. I'm also concerned about the thought that they may need a traffic signal there. That tells me that this is very high density. I don't know of other developments in the area that need a traffic signal. So density is really a concern of mine. Also, I don't...
You need to understand, we can't control that.
The density of the development?
Correct.
Okay. Many states, cities, counties have concurrency requirements when they have development, that the infrastructure be in place before the development is allowed to proceed. And it seems like the widening is going to come far too late. In my opinion, it needs to be done sooner than later to allow for the development. So those are just my points I'd like to make.
You're preaching to the choir on that, because that's something we've been urging all along. We'd like the infrastructure in place, too.
Right. And I understand that the planning, I think it's the planning commission or the city just said that the level of service that is acceptable is a level of C, and this development will lower the level of service to C. But if there is also the new development with Regency Point and with Rose Creek, it easily can fall to a D, which is unacceptable. And that's growth that has already been approved, so I think that needs to come into play. And also what it's going to do to Portland Boulevard, because that does get backed up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Yocel, I'd like to clear a thing that I've probably... You'll get to come back when we hear all the protesters. Tom Hodgkin?
My name's Tom Hodgkin, and I live at 107 Lakeview Trail in Edmond. And I am currently the general manager at Rose Creek, and I'm here today to speak in behalf of those of Rose Creek. A lot of the concerns that we have, you've already heard, and they've been reiterated numerous times now. One question I guess I have for you is that you said you don't have any control over the density, and I understand that. I've been in development for 40 years, I've lived in seven different states. I've seen what happens when development has gone unchecked. I think we have an opportunity here today to not make some of the mistakes that have been made in other communities and other states. As I understand it, there's a maximum density, but is there a minimum density? Do you have the opportunity to say, "Yes, the maximum density is X, but for this particular area, it's just too dense"? One of the things that hasn't been brought up is there's a 17-acre commercial parcel on the corner of May Avenue, which at some point in time will be developed as a commercial enterprise. We still have eight and a half acres roughly, plus or minus, just to the east of our 164th Street entrance, which we're looking at developing right now into some commercial ventures. Then going west, there's almost a half a section along 164th Street that is undeveloped, that is mixed-use and commercial, which doesn't show up in any of those traffic studies, the impact put on the infrastructure at 164th. Now, I was in a project in Aspen, Colorado in 2000. I was asked to come out here and look at Rose Creek when it was just a field. And when I did come out here in 2006 and actually go to work here, Rose Creek was underway, I couldn't believe what had happened to just that general area. Because when I was out there and first looked at it in 2000, there wasn't much out there. But I was told about the Portland Avenue expansion was supposed to happen in the early 2000s, or in the early part of 2000, not the year 2000, but in the first half of the last 10 years. When I got here in 2004 or 2006, nothing had happened. It had been moved back and been moved back, and it's kind of a moving target. And I think that with the other development that's going to go onto 164th Avenue, and with that being on kind of on the back burner based on the bond issues that were passed, that we have the potential to really overburden an area that's tough right now. And although we were just told that in 2012 they're going to start the Portland Avenue fix, you know, we'd been told that for 10 years, and it hasn't started yet. And so I guess it's under the point, when I see it, I'm going to believe it. And I've talked, we have a traffic engineer who lives in our community, and I've talked to him on multiple occasions about it, because it's very important to us because of our ability to market the property that we have up north of Portland Avenue and going east on 164th Street. And it all hinges on those improvements coming up. So we're very interested in what happens there. And right now, the infrastructure just doesn't support the amount of impact that's going to be there and when we can get these facilities taken care of.
Taking your issues in reverse, Portland is a State Highway 74, and so that's not within the city's control.
I understand.
You know that.
I understand that.
We don't have any ability within the terms of the R1 zoning district, which is what this proposed site is, to dictate a range of density. So the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. They could do every lot 6,000 square feet if they wanted to. They haven't done that. But we don't have the ability to direct that, except as it abuts the neighborhood immediately to the east.
Okay. Well, we, as a representative...
I'm sure you're concerned, by the way, about infrastructure.
Yes. Well, as a representative of Rose Creek, with the community, the property owners and the developer, we urge you to deny this as proposed.
Thank you.
Respectfully submit this. Thank you.
Kimmy Vesta?
Hello, my name's Kimmy Vesta, 16428 Greysand. Here to protest due to lack of infrastructure, which has been said. The thing I have to add is what I read in the March 11 staff report was that the traffic study would take the area, Northwest 164th in Portland, from a grade of A to a grade of D. The traffic study that was presented today only addresses the entrance and exit to their addition, which obviously those of us that live in the area are more concerned about, you know, the, the daily commute that has been said. As has been said, my husband and I commute every single day. If you leave for work at 7:40, you can't turn onto Portland because it's backed up for a mile. So you have to adjust your lifestyle accordingly. My second concern of three that I have, my second concern is schools. Nobody's mentioned that. The Edmond School District is, is where we currently live. My kids will be enrolled starting in 2012 for the next nine years or more. And there's been no mention of the impact of the number of homes in this development on class size, bus routes, and then just the general facilities. And then my final thing to consider is in 2007, we lived at Northwest 50th and May, which is three blocks from a fire department. My son had an ear infection and spiked a fever so high that he had a febrile seizure that lasted for 22 minutes. And every day, when I kiss him goodnight, I thank God that the EMS was able to get there in time to intubate him and save his life, basically. So I would just ask that you consider the ability of emergency services to support the people in this area when you have such traffic congestion. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Princess Easter?
If you could, please pull up the...
Excuse me. Give us your name and address, please.
Sorry, Princess Easter. I'm not making that up. 16224 Dustin Lane in Edmond, Oklahoma. If you could, please pull up the slide that addresses the results of the traffic report. That one. Thank you. I'm currently a new resident, my husband and I and our 15-month-old son are new residents to Regency Point as of January. We also are lot owners in Rose Creek. And I just wanted to state that it does not appear that the traffic report has included the additional phases that have been developed and that will be developed in the Rose Creek area. The 125, that number there, that's highlighted in green on the Rose Creek side, is not at all the number of vehicles that access that exit there on 164th. Please note that the phases that extend north of there, right underneath the Internet Mapping Framework title, those cars, in order to access the fastest highway route, will exit the 164th exit and entrance off, out of Rose Creek. So those cars need to be considered and factored into the traffic report analysis as well. I also just strongly oppose the entrance into the Rose Creek, into the Regency Point develop from the Ironstone neighborhood, simply because my 15-month son, who's just started walking, will be, loves to be outside. And the cars that will exit out of that neighborhood and enter into ours to exit out of 164th will be passing on our street. And I just do not want to be that mother that has to constantly worry about cars speeding through our neighborhood and, and passing on my street because I want my son. I moved, we moved to Regency Point because we love the neighborhood and we want our son to be able to grow up around, you know, outside and play and have fun. And I just, I'm just concerned that that will not be able to happen if we have cars, additional cars coming through our neighborhood. So I strongly urge you to deny the preliminary plat of Ironstone Development.
Thank you. Mark?
I may have misspoke in my initial presentation about the number of vehicles. Or I just said it wrong, possibly. Definitely, the traffic analysis takes into account the normal household configuration. So yeah, there will definitely be two and three car households and that's taken into consideration by the software that's used to come up with those values. If you could go forward about one maybe, slide, one more. Okay, and this is something that I omitted from my original presentation that I would hope would give some peace of mind to the residents in the area. The, the red outlined triangle at the bottom along Memorial, just west of May, I meant for that to represent the on-ramps that are currently under construction onto the park, onto John Kilpatrick Turnpike. Those will be complete and operational by September, according to ODOT and OTA. That, in my opinion, I know we're trying to get several households out of this six or nine square mile area. And right now, the major conduit that we've all become accustomed to is 74, even though by the end of this year, we'll have May four-lane the entire length, pen, four-lane the entire length. And those will begin to carry much more of the six to nine square mile traffic load down to the turnpike and then over to the parkway. For the exact same reasons some of the protesters have mentioned, that traffic delays and construction zones have caused frustration and headaches. If you invert those, that's the very reason people will migrate to these new four-laned roads and down to the highway system and their trips will be expedited out to work, school, whatever the function might be. So I just wanted to bring that last point up.
Miss somebody?
I'm still available for any questions.
Okay. Randall Fudge, I somehow had two pieces of paper stuck together. I apologize.
That's okay. Randall Fudge, 16316 Dustin Lane. I've been here before and I think you all know that my main concern is over the impact that the density proposed here will have on the infrastructure surrounding this Ironstone Last night, if you went south on Portland at 6:45, you would have found it backed up from Memorial all the way to 150th. This is just gonna add more headache to this area. 431 new homes, where, that's got to be over 800, 900 cars. The, the impact that will have is, is not gonna be very good for this area. Not just to the traffic, but to the schools, the fire, safety, et cetera. When Ms. Ogan was here speaking earlier, I believe what she was trying to reference was the traffic study that was done in which it was stated that even if 164th is widened to four lanes, the level of service had the potential to drop not only to a C, but potentially a D level, which is defined as being unstable. And that's with 164th being widened to four lane, which is not even on the calendar until And I don't think we should lose sight of not just 164th, but Portland. I know Portland is not something you have control over or the state highway. But Portland right now, Portland right now has no shoulders to it. It's, it's very dangerous. There are wrecks there all the time and there have been fatalities there. And even if Portland is improved, what will that do to the impact of 164th? Because that, that highway improvement will end at 164th to be picked up later past 164th going north. So if you've got people going 165 miles, excuse me, 65 miles an hour up the state highway and then that ends, that highway ends at 164th, I can't imagine that improving the impact of traffic on 164th. The residents of Regency Point, which I'm part of, recommend denial of the proposed plat and we hope that you'll see it our way.
Thank you. Have we missed anyone? Okay. Commissioner Gales?
We've heard this before, once, twice. A lot of good new information today. I think Mark did a great job pulling that together for us. But kind of rehash it a little bit as to density. The density is dictated by the zoning, not by the plating, okay? And that zoning is in place, it's in place in the PUD. That's why the chairman has been saying we don't have control over the density. That, that horse has already left the barn. And that density has been approved. We denied this plat the first time, not because of its density, but because of the impact of the density on the infrastructure or the lack of infrastructure at the time. The applicant has gone back and amended the plat, made some changes to make it better and make it conform with, with our subregs and some of the requests. The one change that was not made that we discussed in the earlier meeting was the point you brought up, Jim, about the stub street to the east. I believe we concluded in our previous meeting that that stub street was not required any longer. It's not required for public safety because of the west stub they've put in. And certainly, it would not provide neighborhood connectivity because Regency is private streets and, and it would be gated. So I would encourage the applicant, and I think it's an oversight that that didn't get taken out, but that shouldn't be there. The problem I'm having with this application is the problem we had with it the first time. The infrastructure is, is not there to support it at this point. We have 2012 coming for the highway. We have 2015 coming for 164th Street. If it was construed by the applicant or anyone else that there was something, quote, "wrong" with the plat, I think the plat has been brought into conformity and all our TEs have been addressed. It's simply an infrastructure issue and I don't see anything that has changed, nor do I see anything that's going to change in the immediate future as far as that key infrastructure, 164th Street and State Highway 74, Portland, whatever you want to call it. I just don't think that's going to happen overnight, obviously. If I understand what Mark was telling us about the timing of the phases, it appears we'll just be getting into phase two or end of phase two or maybe three when the city comes along and carries up 164th. It'll make another nightmare if all these houses are there. So I, I come back to the same conclusion. The infrastructure's not there. That's why we denied it the first time. I'd move denial.
I'll second that. Any discussion commissioners further? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It's denied. We'll wait a minute and let the room clear. Item six is S.P.U.D. 567, an application by Danny Gassett to rezon 7601 West Hefner Road from P.U.D. 884 to S.P.U.D. 567, Ward 8. Your name and address, please.
Please, yes. Name is Danny Gassett. Reside in Carrollton, Texas, 4253 Hunt Drive. Have been the owner of this property now for possibly six years. It is, now the Hefner Road is, been developed into a five-lane road, completed. And I come to you asking that we can have this changed to a sped reflecting an O2 office zoning. We are in agreement with all TEs with the exception of item number six. We are anticipating this to be very supportive of the neighborhood's need in the area for some office area of office parks. These will be standalone buildings ranging from 2,500 to 4,000 square feet, similar to some of the other office parks that you probably have seen in, in MacArthur and other locations here in the northern area of Oklahoma City. Here to answer any of your questions, I do have our civil engineer, Lax Laheny, with us from MGR. And he has worked with the staff. We have met with Lance and JJ on a previous meeting. And Lax has also met with several of the departments here. So I'm here to answer any of your concerns or questions that we might have and any technical issues will have Lax answer.
Do I understand that you want Stony Creek to be a private, or excuse me, a public street?
That's our preference, yes.
I don't think we can do that. You've got too many curb cuts, you don't have the right configuration to access a public street.
Okay. I understand your concern to that point. I would just like to say that I've got a phase two that's going to be developed behind this and the concern will be in the future development of have that being a private road.
Well, it doesn't meet our requirements for curb cuts, setbacks and parking alignments along a public street.
While he's coming up, clarify, I didn't understand what you were saying about not agreeing with TE six and the parking.
On the parking, we had, our preference would be that that comes and would match our master plan design that we, we have on the Seminole.
Well, but the TE, as I read it, says it'll conform with Article 10, which just sets minimum parking spaces. So why don't you want to comply with that, I guess is my question.
Well, we had talked about that in our original meeting, that we were asking for somewhat lesser numbers of parking and they would be cross-utilized across, in, in this park, office park.
On an office park like this, I don't think we necessarily have a problem with cross-utilization. I think we do have a problem with making sure that it's, that it's adequate for then whether your street is public or private. And I agree with the chairman, it probably needs to be private. If you don't have the parking, then you're gonna have a congested street on top of it. I think you need to give that some thought.
Public versus private street, we are keeping public streets stony brick because these will be the access to the north...
I think we do have a problem with making sure that it's adequate for then whether your street is public or private, and I agree with the chairman, it probably needs to be private. If you don't have the parking, then you're going to have a congested street on top of I think you need to give that some thought.
Public versus private street, we are keeping public streets, Stony Creek, because this will be the access to the north property, the future development. As far as the curb cuts are concerned, we can restrict that, and we can have the private cross-access is meant, if that works for you.
For this to be a public street, you'd have to redesign the site. I mean, the fact that you want access to the north doesn't dictate that it needs to be a public street.
We'll stay with the private street then.
Okay.
And what about the?
Now, we've still got to go back to TE six. What is the, what does the parking space difference, Lax, between city ordinance and what you're proposing?
By the city ordinance, it'll require about 100 spaces.
And how many are you providing?
We are 69.
How many?
69.
So you're 30% short. That's not minor.
And your office buildings are going to be in size?
2,500 to 4,000.
2,500 to 4,000. And I'm just look, I'm, looks like you have about five or six to a building along the west. I happen to office in one of these office parks, and I will tell you, this parking's not going to work. It's light. As the chairman said, it's 30% off. Well, I think it is. I can't, you know, I, we have a little over 30 individual buildings in our complex, and out of that 30, and ours run from about 2,500 square feet to about 5,000, I can't think of more than two or three that don't have at least six or eight cars in front of them every day just for their normal workforce, let alone customers or clients. I really think you either need to come into performance with the requirement or continue it and redesign and show us how it'll work. That's scary to me.
If may I, we are considering deleting one building on the northwest corner. They'll reduce the office space amount, and they'll give us additional parking.
Will you just make that whole area up there a parking lot?
Parking, greenbelt common area.
How's that going to serve all these buildings down here along Hefner Road? If you put the parking lot up on the north end, I mean, realistically, I don't think people are going to walk down Stony Creek, then they'll be parking out on Hefner to get to these buildings, for crying out loud. How many cars would that reduce your number to? How many cars would eliminating that lot would reduce your?
It would do two things, it seems to me. Clearly, it is the lot that is most underserved, so it eliminates that problem, and it does free up some space for additional parking, whether it's enough additional parking or not, I guess.
Well, I guess my point is, yes, if you eliminate the building, you lower the required number of spaces. I understand the math there. But then if you turn around at step two and say, well, I'm going to make that north lot a parking lot, well, the people in those first two buildings may use it, but as you come farther south toward Hefner, you know, the reason people like these type of arrangements is they get to park at the door. And so I'm a little protective of that requirement set out in TE six. I think it's there for a reason. And I'd like, like I said, to have you either need it or maybe continue it and redesign and show us how you, why you don't need it.
We will redesign it and take continuous for two weeks. Is that okay?
Can you get it turned around in two weeks and back to us, Bob?
We don't have another meeting, so.
Or July 8th, right?
No, I guess you're right, there is one.
July 8th is two weeks.
Right, right. I was thinking this, we could probably do it in two weeks, but.
When does he have to have it into you?
We'd need something the first of next week.
First part of next week, Lax.
Because if we don't, if we don't do it, then he's in August.
And he's in August, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I was.
Okay, we'll take a motion to continue item six for two weeks.
Seven.
I can't make the motion.
Don't move.
I said I'm asking for a motion.
Don't move. Now, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to continue item six for two weeks. Cast your votes, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Items seven and eight have been continued to July the 8th as well. Item nine is C-6224, which is the final plat of Rio Toscano, Section One, Ward Five.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafts and Tol Sparks, representing the applicant. This is a final plat that matches the approved preliminary plat. We're in agreement with all of TEs and would ask for your approval. Would you have the answer and questions you have?
No one signed up, commissioners? Your motion approved. Motion second approved, item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Items 10 and 11 have been continued. Item 12 is S.P.U.D. 565, is an application by Acord, OKC Members LLC, to rezon 6446, North Henel Avenue from R4, General Residential, to S.P.U.D. 565 and Ward One.
Hi, my name's Brent Nashert, and I'm appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Acord, OKC Members LLC. Acord is the owner of Solabelle Apartments located at 6303 Northwest 63rd. And Acord has recently completed a substantial renovation of the property, and as part of this renovation, Acord made a number of these apartment homes suitable for corporate residents. Most corporate residents generally stay an average of two to three months. One reason we've been successful in attracting these short-term residents to the food service that we provide. In addition, we also have long-term residents that have also chosen to participate in our meal services. Solabelle has been very innovative in its approach to meeting the needs of the residents, and that's the main reason we have occupied up to 100%. When we first bought the property, it was 30% occupied. We're very proud of these accomplishments and our commitment to our residents that allows this success. One repeated request we have had from our residents is for beer, wine, and mixed beverage to be available for them during our meal service hours. For that reason, we have requested an ABC two alcohol beverage consumption for the clubhouse area of the property, so that alcoholic beverages could be served. This is a unique request in the fact that we are not going to serve the general public. Our clubhouse area is open only to residents of the property and their guests. It is a gated community, accessed by card key, and it's a reception area at the pavilion area, which is the clubhouse, very controlled access, so it will not be open to the general Since the residents do live on property, along with their meal service, there would be no need for them to leave the property. It'd be pretty much a full service right there. We also expect that to cause a reduction in the traffic. And we have just demonstrated that we're responsible citizens and have maintained a quality property with the upgrades that we've done for the past two and a half years. The crime rate has gone way down, as we well know, Lyrewood is a tough street, and the crime in our area has gone significantly down. We also would like to address the requirements of our residents, and the only way to make sure we can accommodate the residents and be sure their operation is a success. The property, if you grant the application, there was some opposition to, there is some oppositions, but we do believe that this unique situation that we're in as far as all on-service, the part of the property that has the corporate residents is right across the bridge from the pavilion. There's a lake there, a pond, and all the corporate residents are on that side, so therefore there'd be no reason to drive around Penile, they'd just walk across the bridge, go up into the food service area, and it would also be a, food is served from 4:30 to 7:30, and that would be the primary of the time of the mixed beverage. It would be seasonal because we would like to have it poolside as well, and that's, of course, a seasonal thing. We wouldn't do that in December in Oklahoma. I do believe in Wood Lake, as it was called in '72 when it was built, it was very nice property. I do believe at the time they had a mixed beverage license. We have not been able to find that, but the pavilion and clubhouse area is very well-suited for that, and it just makes great sense to us if we are able to have a mixed beverage license for our corporate clients. And that's about going to handle it for me. I do thank you for your consideration. Any questions or opposition?
Yes, sir. I'm a little confused. You're talking about the clubhouse, you're talking about the meal service. Are all the meals served in the clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you're talking about hours of serving would just be from 4:30 to 7:30?
That primarily, that's when the meal service is. The pavilion stays open till 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And then if I'm hanging around the pool?
That's a possibility. We do have 24-hour courtesy patrol, which, you know, is there on-site at all times. And again, it's seasonal, it'd be a seasonal thing, but the pavilion does stay open till 11.
Thank you.
Are you then asking for the ABC license for service hours 4:30 to 11:00, so after 7:30 it becomes a bar? What are we talking about here?
Well, I'm not, primarily during the meal service, I would, I would, it was not going to primarily be a bar. That's not, that's not the intention. It's to basically serve alcohol to the meal service people or the guests on property. It would not be open to the public.
And you're not asking for this to cover the tennis court that's to the side?
Not necessarily. I know that was in the application originally, but, you know, if that, that would be fine to withdraw the tennis courts.
Okay, we do have someone who's signed up to speak to us, so we'll hear from her, and then we'll have you come back. Ms. Tanner, if you would pull the microphone, can you hear me? Pull that down, and then we'll be able to hear you. If you give us your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Janet Tanner. I live at 6447 North Penel Avenue, and I am a homeowner.
Okay.
I'm speaking before the council today to say that the people on North Penel and on North College Streets oppose this permit. I have 41 signatures for this petition, and we don't want them to rezon it. There is no place for any of those people to park. They have like 15 parking spaces. The rest of the time, they're parked on the street in front of our houses. And I was reading on the computer, Chapter 175840 states that 300 feet is required from each residence or from a residence, and you can't serve liquor. Is that true? No?
No.
Okay. Well, my front door is less than 75 feet from the front door of this permit, so I would like to ask you to please vote no, and I would like to turn in my.
Petition? You may do that, if you'll give that to our secretary, please.
I'll ask you to turn the microphone up a little bit and give us your name and address. All right, I'm Ron Cooper. I own rental properties on Penile, I own three of the buildings. I live at 3229 Castle Rock Road in Oklahoma City. I'd like to take exception with some of the statements that were made about how people get to the proposed restaurant, club, bar. He says, as you can see from the map, the great majority of this complex is on the east side of the lake. There are few, very few residents that live on the west side of the lake in this complex. What's not shown on this map is just around the corner of the bend there on Penile and College is an elementary school. In fact, the property, now you see it, the property line of the elementary school and the Wood Lake or Isabella Athletic Club is shown there, share a common border. The serving, this alcohol is just one building away.
Is the school north of the health center?
It's north and west. It's within, I'd say it's within 200 yards of this facility. As denoted there, where the subject is, there is no parking. There's, at 10:30 this morning, there were seven parking places available for people to park. Over the past several months, since this complex has come into being, there's been numerous functions that's been held at this complex. The parking has been all over the streets, everywhere, blocking children's play, access to even my own tennis homes. The people that park there will not pay any attention to the current restrictions, which is two hours. They sit there for a long time, and if you ask them to leave, they won't. So generally, I think it's not a good idea to put alcohol and children together, not to mention the high traffic that has now occurred because of the use of the facilities, not only Athletic Club, which is open to the public, and, I don't know, we've seen real estate meetings and everything else out there, and the people come flying down the street. They've already killed at least two residents' cats, had near misses with children that live on the street, out playing in the street on bicycles, and I think they have a right to do that without having to worry about all this traffic. So once again, I'm opposed to this, and as are 47 of the 60 people that live on that little circle which is on that application. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to address us, first of all?
Melissa Wheeler's the general manager of Solabelle.
Melissa Wheeler, 3060 Northwest 41st. Couple of things I wanted to address with the protest comments were, yes, we do have property to the west, there's actually 332 homes there, as we do have 87 on Penile, which is adjacent to 63rd Street. None of those homes are actually eligible to be, take part in the food service program, which lessens any driving traffic to the pavilion at this point. The 380 homes on the east side of the property is a very short walk, literally two minutes. My point in asking for the ABC two is currently, yes, there is traffic, but what the situation is, is that our guests, our residents, come to the facility for food service from 4:30 to 7:30. At that point, they do drive because they're going to go somewhere after they're done eating, to have drinks or whatever the case may be. Allowing the permit would alleviate that, they would be able to be contained in that building. One other issue in response to the traffic is that most of the residents, if not all, on Penile and College are used to dealing with a property that was blighted at best from. dealing with a property that was blighted at best from deferred maintenance. Over the course of the 80s and 90s, it had a pretty standard 30% occupancy level. Due to the many renovations that we have made, we do have that property at 100%, not just the east side, but Lyrewood, Pinale, and 63rd Street. Consequently, traffic is a result of that, not because of food service or access to the facility, it is strictly because of the number of occupants that we have there.
Any questions, commissioners? Tell us about events that were referred to in the pavilion other than just the meal service. What else goes on there and when?
We do several things. Timing is not usually an issue. We do everything from Christmas parties to pool parties. We have Chamber of Commerce events, we're very active with the Chamber of Commerce. We have events with them. We do luncheons for different businesses in the area. The pavilion is quite large, so we do put that building out to use to different organizations, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to allow them to hold their events there free of charge. As well, we have a licensed spa and a licensed esthetician onsite who does massage therapy, manicures, pedicures, that sort of thing for our residents as well, as well as our corporate office. We have an administrative staff in the downstairs building. So there is more going on than just events, and just to note, we do have 24 parking spaces in front of that facility, as well as 24 additional spaces just to the north at the fitness center. So we have a total of 48 spaces there for parking, and the street parking is two hours, so they are allowed to park on the street, on Pinale.
There was, at times, and recently, there's been some construction that's been going on, renovations of the pavilion and the pool, so there was probably some people that were parked in the street at that time for some time, probably longer than two hours, but that's, that's pretty much over with now. So, you know, as recently, there was, was probably some, some traffic there, but most of the renovations are complete, and that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioners, discussion?
I have one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, James.
I have a comment, I mean, a question. In your, in your presentation, you stated that the alcohol would only be served with those tenants that would be residents?
And their guests, yes.
And their guests. What about for these other events, like these Christmas parties, and the list of the events that was just named?
The Christmas parties would be in-house.
Or Chamber of Commerce meetings, and all the whole list that she just named, they're guests, aren't they?
Yes. Well, would, would...
You are correct. What typically happens with the Chamber of Commerce meeting is there is a sponsor who provides food and beverages, that sort of thing. So that actual instance is removed from our hands and turned over to those sponsors. As well, when we're talking about the residents partaking in food service, we are not talking about all 799 homes. Because of infrastructure reasons of their own, there's a lot of other items that play into our corporate services and some of our full-service residents, such as housekeeping. We provide housekeeping services, we provide different amenities to those guests. It's not 799 homes that will be partaking in this, it's 380, just the east side of the property. So it's not like we're going to have 800 residents and then their guests there. It's a limited number of people that partake in the food service.
But if we approve this ABC, they could serve liquor to anybody that uses that facility, is that not correct?
With an S P U D, I think we can control, I mean, we can limit it to what they're asking for, which is to serve it to residents, serve it.
Okay, but we're going to have a parking problem if they do rent this facility out to the Chamber and these other, other things, other than the, the guests, you know, I think it's going to be a, I think we need to see something about how they're going to handle parking to these other entities that they're going to lease this thing to.
If I can respond to that, we already do. I mean, during any event, we have additional parking at the fitness center and on the area of the property we call Pinale, which is just off 63rd. Any event that we have, we open that area up for parking, and our courtesy patrol staff actually shuttles guests from our property to the pavilion. I've, I've never had a situation where we've had hundreds of cars parked on the street, we've been able to shuttle them back and forth. We have our own golf carts and our own fleet of cars that we actually let our courtesy officers use.
If you look at the map, the Pinale that she's parking is directly south of the pavilion. That parking lot right there is, is the one that's open to, at four parking.
Nick, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, just an observation, what I'm seeing here may not be the intent, but when I look at the application, I share, Commissioner Allen's terms, I'm seeing a 17,500-foot bar. You know, we're going to serve food for three hours, and then whatever. I think that either needs some work, or it needs to be denied.
I have very mixed feelings about this. You know, I generally think that, first of all, our ABC system is so broken that I have very little faith in it or trust in it. We have such a problem with enforcement that any, any close call to me, you know, defaults to a no, because issues like this, where, you know, it's really primarily intended to be part of their food service, but it's not really going to be limited to that, and even if it were, limited by the language of this S P U D, you know, who's going to go out there and enforce it? I just have real concerns about that. I think sometimes we can be kind of backward in Oklahoma City about how we allow for the consumption of alcohol, and I don't necessarily have a problem with the idea of the sort of corporate services application and that sort of thing, but the difference between us and a city like New York City is that we drive everywhere we go, and that combination is just not a good one. I have to give an awful lot of deference to the people who are going to be living with this problem on a day-in and day-out basis, and I'm kind of with Nick. I think it either needs to be made a little bit more workable, if that's possible, or I think it probably should be denied.
If I can make one more comment. As far as us driving everywhere, the vast majority of our corporate guests are actually members of the Federal Aviation Administration at the academy here. With the exception of a few who might drive in from Tulsa or Kansas, or from Dallas or Kansas, they fly into the city. They do not have vehicles with them. Their, the academy, the FAA academy, actually provides shuttle service to pick those students up and take them to the academy. It's almost more like a hotel environment to a certain extent, as far as that's concerned. By no means do all of our guests drive their own vehicles as they do are flying in from, from out of state.
Well, I can understand the appeal of residents being able to have a dining facility that allows them to have a beer, a glass of wine, a cocktail with dinner. Expanding it to a whole bunch of other activities and opening it up to public functions with alcohol would give me the same concern that it does the neighbors. That's really not how I understood the application when, when we talked about it.
I think that, that is correct. Your, the application is not to open it up to the public.
Correct.
That is, that is absolutely...
That then means the chamber can't come in and...
Well, as I said, we would not be providing the alcohol for the chamber events. They have their own sponsors that bring in their own food and alcohol.
That doesn't give me any comfort.
Okay, well, then we can not do, I mean, that's not an issue at all. It can be strictly for residents' use only.
I mean, that I understand, and I, I mean, the FAA is here, the academy is here, air traffic controllers are trained here for nationwide posts, accident investigators and so forth.
I would want to see those hours really tied then to the food service and, and really limited. I mean, maybe, maybe a little bit beyond 7:30 if that's the end of the food service, but, you know, not, not just wide open. It would really have to be tied to that. I mean, I'm with you, I, I get that, but I, I, the idea of it, of it being open for these events, and, and again, how do we enforce that? I mean, who's going to be out there enforcing? Who gets served? I mean, 380 homes is a lot of homes, and, you know, who's going to be enforcing that?
I have the same sentiment, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, James?
I couldn't, I couldn't really support it in the context that is being presented, but, you know, it's going to go along with the land and, and enforcement, so it just has a lot of inherent problems, not disputing what your intents are, but I think it's just loose, too loose for me to be able to support it like it is.
Well, maybe we, if we want to consider it, we need to tie it down to meal service and a half an hour, an hour beyond that, or something, 8:00 or 8:30 at night. I mean, that's not, doesn't create a, a party, but I can understand neighbors' concerns if this was to be open for all sorts of events, for all sorts of organizations. I wouldn't want to live across the street from it either. I mean, this is a residential area. We're not out on Northwest Highway somewhere.
I would suggest that the applicant take some time, see what they can do to tighten this thing up and bring it back to us. I don't, I'm, I'm not really prepared to vote on this in any positive way today. I want some assurance both from our staff and from legal and, and from them about how this is going to work.
The principal was unable to be here today. He had a urgent family matter that came up. That's why I'm not a little more clear with some of your questions, James, I apologize, but we can certainly get those things tightened down the way you want, if we can defer it and get the answers that you need.
Well, you're going to have to take a deferral if you want, want an approval, because we're down to five members. It takes all five at this point to approve something.
That would be, that would be fine. As far as the deferral part, do we need to contact somebody about your questions, or is that, will that be part of the minutes, of the things, the concerns that we need to address?
Well, we talked to Bob and Lance, two gentlemen sitting right to your left today, and can you come back in two weeks with something tailored more to what we're asking, or would you like to come back the first week in August, first meeting in August? We have one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
Two, two weeks would be fine.
Yep, two weeks would be fine.
I mean, this is a pretty simple question. We just need to tighten it up. We've pretty much already decided to take the tennis courts out of consideration. That was a discussion that we had that was brought up before, so the tennis, tennis courts would be off.
Let me ask another question. Have you had any discussion with your neighbors at all, or is it simply they're aware of the application, they've sent, signed petitions and sent letters?
That is literally as far as it has, most of the, the residents along that street on the duplexes are renters, and so no, we haven't had any, any...
Well, we've heard from the landlord of a number of those sites today. I would suggest you have a discussion with them if you can, and see if there's any way to make peace with them, or if they're, no matter, no matter what you do, they're going to be opposed. We just need to know that.
That would not be a problem at all. I think the goal of A Sola Bella is community-oriented. They've invested a lot of money in that property, and they want to be good neighbors. They've cleaned that place up a bunch, and they certainly want to get along with everybody over there, so...
Well, I've looked at it, so I understand that part. Let's take a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, but I want to clarify my statement. I was saying that the zoning for the ABC goes along with the land, and to be able to monitor that and, and enforce that, even though your intent is what it is, we still, I still have a problem with it because it goes along with the land, the zoning itself. With that, I'd make a motion that we continue this item until the next meeting, I think that...
July 8th?
July 8th.
Second. Motion second to continue item 12 to July 18th, July 8th, excuse me. Cast your votes. That's approved. We'll see you in two weeks.
Item 13 is ABC 717, an application by David Dunn for an ABC2 overlaying the C3 Community Commercial District at 8139 Northwest 10th Street.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name's David Dunn, 8139 Northwest 10th.
Thank you.
And I've, I know we had one protest letter. I, since then, have visited with Joey Allen. We talked on the phone for 30, 45 minutes. I don't think that we have any more protest out of them. I have one letter from the House Kawasaki, it's the largest business on the street, within probably a half a mile, and I'd present that if I can.
Yes.
We bought this property, my family and I did, a little over a year ago, and it was a distressed property. We've cleaned it up, we've planted trees, shrubs, the entire areas, it's, it's, it's much nicer now. The neighborhood, everybody that I've talked to on it comes up and tells us they appreciate we're there, and I would just ask for you guys to, to support it.
Okay, we have someone who wants to support it. We don't have anyone signed up in opposition.
Give us your name and address. Kenneth Kouchman, 7632 Northwest 12th Street, and I didn't exactly sign in as opposition. I signed in to offer information regarding the letter that was placed on file by Friends of Northwest 10th Street, and to, and in fact, to confirm now many of the things that the other things said. This letter, I believe, was submitted on Tuesday. Indeed, Joey Allen, on the Friends of 10th Street board, confirmed to an email to me and to others that he did speak with Mr. Dunn, the applicant, about many of the concerns we've had as advocates for our neighborhood on Northwest 10th Street. Our letter mentions two things specifically that were concerned us in the application. Indeed, my understanding from Joey was that the conversation was very productive, we're very, very encouraged. We have many of the same concerns in the neighborhood in general. Letter addressed two things about the application, and I should also say the property does look great.
Sure. Talk to us if you don't mind.
Yes, sorry. Namely, when I, I personally came to review the file last Wednesday, missing from that file was a floor plan, which was of concern because county records show 4,200 square feet, 4,300 square feet, 4,100 square feet of space in that building, but the application's only for 2,800, so we're concerned about the remaining square footage. That may have been discussed, but it was not relayed to me what the nature of that discussion would have been. Again, in the prior discussion about ABCs and the land, we're learning about what this means, and we want to be sure we're on top of this. Secondly, lack of a menu, we recognize that the ABC2 is a restaurant that serves alcohol. We need some restaurants. Without the menu, it's difficult to kind of get an idea of what the city's asked for, and it's not there, want to call back the commission's attention.
I think we have a menu, Bob, don't we?
I also called last Friday to ask about these, and was told that no additional things had been put on file. And finally, there was one additional item in that we, when I visited last Wednesday with Planning Commission, Planning Department, that file did not contain staff reports yet, and so we kind of were wanting to hear back from the city in conversations, kind of like previous to this, things to be watching for and be concerned about as we try to improve our neighborhood. So our letter is on file. I think we're very encouraged by the conversation that's already been done. I wish Joey could be here. I probably can't talk much more about what the content of that was, as I wasn't part of it, except for what he relayed to me, but we do have those concerns about the application, and we certainly want to be working with the city in all the ways that are positive for this neighborhood, and any other information I could offer about the letter, its background, I'd be willing to offer the commission. We kind of lean on your expertise, the expertise of the Planning Department and the experience of this commission to know, well, not to know anything, but to, to, in our review of the documents.
Well, Mr. Dunn may be able to clarify, but the total size of the building would include kitchen, mechanical, restrooms, things like that, which would not necessarily be where he'd be asking to serve alcohol.
There's a separate dwelling that's the upstairs of the building. There's a separate dwelling that's the upstairs of the building with a separate entrance. I brought those plans in. Those aren't the parts that we're wanting to license at all. So it's, there's an upstairs that has the remaining square foot and it, and it comes in from behind.
All right. Cindy, did you want to add to this? You'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Cindy Trong and I live at 8200 Northwest 10th Terrace. And my husband and I live just probably 20 feet away from the restaurant. We are very proud that Mr. Dunn have bought the property. He has made a lot of improvement. And along with 40 of my neighbors, we live just probably about, all of us live 200 feet from the establishment and they all signed a petition. So if you want me to show that. Mr. Dunn has stated the property looked really nice now. I mean, before he moved in, it looked like a dump and now it's really beautiful. There's, we, we really welcome him into our neighborhood. And plus, if he and his family willing to live there, you know, we are, we feel that the establishment is good for us. And we believe it's a positive addition to our community and our neighborhood. So I hope that you grant him the license.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we are five, as a reminder.
Well, I'll go first. This is not an area where I would even consider granting this kind of zoning under normal circumstances. And the fact that it has operated as a bar for a long, long time and is now sort of upgrading, if you will, to a restaurant is a good change. Obviously, you have impressed your neighbors with your efforts to clean up the property. And I find that also very, very impressive. I can't remember a time that anybody showed up down here and said that they and all their neighbors were welcoming this kind of a, of a use nearby them. But, and there is that, that but, you know, this kind of zoning runs with the land. It's there forever, even if you're not. And that does give me real pause. So I guess I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners about what they're thinking.
Well, I'm impressed with 40 or 50 signatures here of people who are saying this was a dump and Mr. Dunn arrived and he's turned the property around and it's an asset or a big, big improvement over what's been there. And with food service and the improvements and the fact that he's evidently living on site tells me that there's a commitment there that we don't hear a lot of times. So I think I could support it.
That is a personal commitment and, you know, not one that runs with the land, which zoning does. And that's, that's the only piece of it that gives me pause. You know, if there were some way that we could grant you this zoning, I wouldn't think twice about it.
I feel very much the same sentiment. You know, you have to appreciate what the applicant is doing and has done, you know. He applaud that we just have this one little bit, that it's not, it's not a personal, it don't run with the person. It runs with the ground. That's, that's why I'm having kind of that uneasiness with.
Could it be submitted as a sped?
It still runs with the land. Well, I mean, once.
It still goes the same way. But we couldn't limit to, to an owner, even with a sped.
No, no. Now, that's taking away a property right. Sure, Mr. Dunn, come back.
If I might. I've, I've sold the home that me and my family owned that the kids grew up in. And I bought this property. It has three acres. And I've moved my cousin into one of the homes and I've moved into the other home. And we're going to be there. I mean, I, this, this is my retirement and this is, you know, I plan on putting a business together that can support my family even long after I'm gone. I'm not going anywhere. And if you guys could please support me, I, I will, I'll be there and it will never be what it used to be. And I've talked to all my neighbors and they, they all see this now. I mean, the guy right next door to me was Bryce Semrad. He owns the building just to the east of me. And he looked at, you know, he came over, he's watched me, what I've been doing. He was the one that was on TV that was opposing it from the very beginning. And he's come over and he said, you know, hey, I'm, I'm happy with what you're doing. And, but anyway, I'm going to be living in the neighborhood. I can afford the property. It's, it's right about the same as my house payment was before. Only this one does have a chance to try to make some money. So anyway, thank you.
If I could offer the applicant some advice, if that's not out of turn. Because we are only five here today, you might choose to take a continuance and come back on the 8th of July when there will be, we hope, more people around the horseshoe.
We expect nine.
And, and my, my guess is that you probably will find the support that you need. But, but with only five of us here today, I think, I think you probably would do better to take a continuance.
I've been doing this nine years and this is the first time we've been five. So it's a most unusual day. But if you'll come back on July 8th, I would hope we would have eight or nine commissioners. Approval takes a minimum of five, which is a majority of the nine on the commission.
And if you would like to do that, I will move to a continuance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 13 until July 8th. Cast your votes and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Item 14 is another ABC 716, an application by New Century Investments LLC for an ABC 2 overlaying PUD 1266, 2809 Northwest Expressway.
Good afternoon. My name is David Hartwell. I'm appearing for New Century Investments 5. We are seeking a ABC 2 overlay of the PUD 1266. This is going to be for a restaurant at the Hilton Garden Inn, which has been built on the property, which will open in August. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you all very much.
Item 15 is PUD 1417, an application by Riverport Park Limited to rezone 1547 and 1601 South Portland Avenue, 4,000 and 4,001 Southwest 15th Street and 4,100 and 4,101 Southwest 15th Street from PUD 35A, an R1 single family with a scenic river overlay, an airport and violence zone through PUD 1417 in Ward 3.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. In the effort of saving a little time, I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail unless you all ask me to. But this is a project that, of course, is along the river and it's a very important piece of property. We have been working on this zoning for a little over a year and talking to people involved in the river. We've been to the scenic overlay, scenic river overlay authority and have been approved. And at the last meeting, we took a continuance on this because there were some additional questions and comments from a couple commissioners and we have since made some modifications to the PUD. And I'll read those into the record here in a minute. Generally, this property is, or currently, this property is, south of 15th Street is zoned I-2. It abuts the city's maintenance facility on the east. There's a landfill on the south. And then the property to the north, half of it is R1 and half of it is I-2. And it's our intent to rezone this into more of a mixed-use development that will allow for a little more intensive uses on the south track, which is track one because of its size and depth. There are some provisions in the PUD that allow us to have a slightly different architectural finish on the buildings that abut the landfill on the south and the city maintenance yard on the east, but only in that area. So, for example, if we had a, a big box user or an entertainment user in there that was a big building, they would have the ability to put architectural steel finish on those two sides. The rest of the sides would be finished according to the scenic river overlay approval as well as the language in the PUD for architectural finish. It is the intent of the developer to market this for mixed use, both retail, residential on the riverfront. As you can notice on the track two, which is our river tract, it's a very narrow, obscure piece of property, which has evolved over time as the city has done the river projects. There's been multiple acquisitions of our client's property, which has created the very narrow piece in the eastern third that is virtually undevelopable for anything, stuff for maybe an open space and a little bit of parking. The site plans that we provided to you are schematic in nature. And they do intend to try to develop it as an intense multi, mixed-use development, approaching the river, just like the riverfront authority would like for it to. We have put not only caps on some of the uses and heights, we've also put minimums on some of the heights to meet that requirement, meet that desire of riverfront development. And then the last track, track three, is more of a standard commercial tract, although we've very limited the uses that can be permitted on that. But it's on a independent tract on the corner of Portland 15th Street. Regarding the technical evaluations that were in the staff report, last time we took the continuances, continuance, there were six TEs. We agreed to all those and we've already made those modifications, submitted that document to the staff. A seventh TE for a traffic impact study was added to go along with the first plat. We agree to that and we'll provide that at that time. And the additional uses that we are proposing to take out of this development, and I'll go by tract, and the list is not very long. On track one, we're going to eliminate use unit 8,300.8, which is animal sales, service and grooming. Use unit 8,300.26, which is a commercial blood center. Use unit 8,250.17, which is residential facilities for dependent and negligent children. On track two, which is the riverfront parcel, we're eliminating the blood center, residential facilities for dependent and negligent children. And in addition to that, we're eliminating 8,350.3, which is custom manufacturing, 8,300.4, excuse me, .46, which is gas station, small restricted, and 8,300.54, which is outdoor sales and display and outdoor storage. And in track three, there are three uses that we're eliminating. 8,300.26, the blood, commercial blood center, 8,350.3, custom manufacturing, and 8,300.54, outdoor sales and display and outdoor storage. So a total of six uses in track two and three in each of tracks one and three. And I've sent a copy of this to the staff and we'll make those changes prior to going to council. And with that, unless there's any other questions, we would ask for your approval.
Commissioners, discussion, questions of Mr. Johnson.
Tim, are you saying you approve or you agree with all the TEs?
Yes, sir.
As written? Is there any protesters?
No protest and the uses that I was concerned about at the last meeting have been addressed. So.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is SPOD 566, an application by Oklahoma Employees Credit Union to rezone 530 Southwest 109th Street from PUD 709 to SPOD 566, Ward 5.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box. I'm here with Mr. Kelly, who is President and CEO of the credit union. The credit union, the existing zoning allows for the credit union to be built and it's under construction, as the pictures I'll show you reflect. There, in anticipation of this meeting and knowing the commitment that this commission has to signs, we went to the homeowners group and there's been a meeting set with them. Mr. Chairman, do you have anybody that's signed up on this case?
Let me check.
No? Okay. I, I ask that because the answer we got from the homeowners was they liked the sign and the sign is shown in your staff report. The existing zoning does not require fencing. And I'm going to show you the fencing that exists and they also would like it to remain open the way it is and, and not require fencing. That's one of your technical evaluations. But this is the sign we proposed. If you've had the opportunity to drive 150th and Bay, it's the exact same sign. Scale-wise, there's a sign down the street close to Western and it's actually 29 feet and you're going to, you're going to see it in the packet. It's another credit union. But from our standpoint, we wanted to be good neighbors. We think this is a very tasteful sign. It's at a good location and the neighbors have indicated they're very supportive and we would, hope you would be too.
Dennis, tell me which TEs you, well, which list is short of the TEs you agree with or the ones you don't? Just give me the short list.
Yeah, let me, we would agree with technical evaluation three, four and five, all of which are okay. TE1 is the fencing standard language about putting a stockade fence up or a brick wall. When you look at the pictures, you'll see that we put a retaining wall up. The neighbors adjacent to us have their own stockade fences and then there's some open area and they, they want it left the way it is and we think that's a good idea. And two, of course, we couldn't agree to because Russell has indicated he likes a, an eight-foot sign and we're just afraid people wouldn't see it, so.
It's a fairly good-sized building.
Building? Yes.
At least it's not a 60-foot sign.
Are you counting on business from traffic driving by so it can be seen or most people know where you are that comes to the credit union?
Mr. Kelly is here and I'm going to let him, him respond to that question. But as with most credit unions or businesses, banks, they try to come up with uniform signs. So, you know, where, where you're in the north part, east, southwest, you can see them, so.
Is the zoning different on your north 150th Street site as compared to this one?
Yes, yes.
And that's why you're here?
Yeah. The whole reason we're here, the existing zoning, a couple of things, and if you want to look at trade-offs, a couple of things. Number one, the existing zoning.
Tell me about the existing zoning. I wasn't talking about trade-offs yet.
Okay. The existing zoning provides for O2 regulations, but also allows for retail sales and services. On the zoning we've applied for under the spud 566, we've taken the retail sales and services out. So we've made it more restrictive. The existing zoning does not require the fencing, so we'd like to keep that the same. And the existing zoning on the, on the sign height is eight feet, 100 square feet. And of course, what we're asking for is a sign that would be 25 feet tall and 260 square feet. So the use really wasn't the question on this case. It was being able to allow consistent signing, so.
So you're looking for 24-hour EMD or how do you, how do you plan to use this?
I'm sorry, which question?
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Mark Kelly and my address is 3421 Northwest 67th Street.
Thank you.
First question was drive-by versus people.
Yes, we, we, of course.
Yes, we were, of course, most of our members, you know, are used to, are not used to us being on the south side, so yes, that is a, you know, we want them to be able to visibly see where we were at. We're not right on the corner of Western and 119th. We're a little bit down on 119th, so that presents a little bit of a location problem. The signage, we want them to be able to visit, see the sign.
Of course, after the first visit, they'll know where you are.
Yeah, people find their money. People find their money.
They do find this. They do find the money.
Second question, and the chairman was curious on our LED. Is that going to go 24 hours? Will it be a shut-off time?
Well, the one we run on North May, we run 24 hours a day, and we had no complaints on it. And it's far enough from any of the residents. Now, I may say, the neighborhood association there is very, very active, and they, when they, we met with them, my staff, along with our contractor and the sign people, and they were very impressed with the sign, so.
Well, you're off a corner, you're surrounded by residential, and I have a problem with 24 hours and probably assign that size at that location. I think 150th Street, where you've got a different kind of zoning and your different surroundings, that's one kind of an area, but this is not a place where I think, because I think we need to stick with the zoning, but that's just my opinion.
That's my opinion, too.
We'd ask you to vote. I know there's only five votes, but we'd like to get on to council, so. We think it's a very attractive sign, and you can't, you cannot put the kind of sign that we want to put up and make it eight feet tall, so we'll just have to agree to disagree on this one.
You're not willing to do anything else, other than the 25-foot sign you've shown us?
Yeah, I think we, I think we want the sign you see right there.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. Cast your votes. You're back in two weeks.
Could you all just make a motion to send it on to council with minutes reflecting what the votes were?
All right, it's me.
I'll make that motion. Send it on to council. Notation of vote.
Second. Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
So done.
I got an affirmative on that one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Item 17 is CE 6228, a final plat of Featherstone Edition, Section 6, in Ward 5.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. I have read the TEs in the staff report. We agree with the TEs and just request approval of the final plat.
No one signed up, Commissioners. Don't usually like to see 10 TEs on a final plat, but here we are.
I'm sorry, and you're agreeing with all of them?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
And tell me, in what ways does the final plat does not conform to the preliminary plan?
I believe that it does conform in every way, and that's one of the things I was going to point out, that none of the TEs are related back to the preliminary plat.
Motion?
To approve.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Item 17. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 18 is ABC 715, an application by Alvarado's Mexican Restaurant for an ABC-1, Overlying C3 Community Commercial at 1164 Wayne Southwestern Avenue, in Ward 5.
Hi, my name's Eileen Hernandez. I reside at 13109 Spring Creek Circle, and we're requesting an ABC-1 alcoholic beverage license to get zoned. We're going to just be serving the low-point beer there.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
I'll move approval.
The motion is second to approve Item 18. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19 is CE 783, an application by Sheridan Redevelopers LLC to close several platted alleyways in Block 62 in the original townsite of Oklahoma City Edition, located west of North Hudson and north of West Sheridan Avenues, in Ward 6.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Beau Patterson with McAfee and Tapt, here on behalf of the applicant Sheridan Redevelopers LLC. Also with me here today in the audience is the owner of Sheridan Redevelopers LLC, Mr. Nick Prefteix. This is the application we have filed to close three alleyways, one of which is a 10-foot-wide east-west alleyway, originally platted in this section, and two are the north-south 20-foot-wide alleyways. These are alleys that join properties that Mr. Prefteix, that Sheridan Redevelopers owns more than 50% of. The, I want to address a couple of items that were in the report, prior to the staff report. There are issues with respect to utilities. Of course, this is not an effort to impede any access to utilities, and whatever required access would be necessary, certainly would be agreeable to. Also, would note that all of the city offices that have responded have not had any objections, and in fact, we met with the downtown design review committee last week, and they voted to approve the closure as requested in these applications. Would also point out that the property owner to the southeast, which is the Union Bus Station, has not responded to or shown any objection to the closure of this alley. Nonetheless, we noted in the report, the staff's recommendation to delete certain sections of our requested closure, and I wanted to address those. Initially, the staff analysis says that it's, I'll take them in order as they appear on the report. It is not clear how closing the alley north of the Union Bus Station will affect bus and vehicular traffic circulation around the station. Well, we would offer that it won't affect it at all for two reasons. Number one, the bus, the bus station previously had a lease on the property, both immediately adjacent to the north and immediately adjacent to the west, and determined that they didn't need that property or that access, to access the station itself. There's complete ingress and egress on both the western portions of the bus station, as it adjoins Walker, and on the southern portion of the bus station. And so, the buses that park on the west side have full ingress and egress on the west side, and the buses that park on the east side have full ingress and egress from the south entrance that's already there. On the occasions in which they have used the alleys to gain ingress from Walker in sort of a circular motion to the other side, on a number of occasions, have actually knocked down the applicant's fence. The applicant owns the property just adjacent to the north, and so, closing that off won't be an inhibition to the bus station to actually park their buses, but it will help circumvent that problem, because there won't be any reason to do a circular around there. The additional benefit in closing the east-west alleyways, we note in our application, is that it's only a 10-foot-wide alleyway. In fact, it wouldn't be, were it developed today, you wouldn't have a 10-foot alleyway there. It's created real potential for problems with cars that are attempting to cut through from Hudson to Walker and vice versa, in instances where they get all the way, or three-quarters of the way through, and then come up face-to-face with the bus that's trying to do a U-turn there, so that would prevent that access issue. It won't impede any of the access by and between Walker and Hudson, because there is a 20-foot alleyway immediately to the north that's regularly used for cross-section access. And so, we don't see a reason to only close that portion of the alleyway that's 150 feet in and further, as the staff analysis suggests. Secondly, the staff analysis indicates that portions of the alleys surrounding a city-owned parking lot serving 420 West Main, closing these alleys, and the staff report says, could affect traffic circulation in this parking lot. We're not sure what the staff is really referring to there, because all we're seeking to do is to close the alleys that were originally planted. There's no intention to affect any of the parking, and in fact, this would essentially validate the use that the city has been using in those alleyways, because the parking's going to continue. It's just that they'll be parking on, they won't be parking on alleyways that were never closed. These will be closed. Again, our client owns the property immediately adjoining both the east and west side, so this is sort of a universal attempt to clean up this property, fix a problem on the east-west alleyway that needs to be closed, for all the reasons we've stated, and on the adjoining north-south alleyways that won't affect the parking that's currently being done. Happy to answer any questions that the commission might have, and Mr. Prefteix can also answer anything if I'm not able to.
Well, I've got one or two, if I may, Mr. Patterson. The buses that pull in on both the east and west side of the bus station, do they all typically back out either onto Walker or Sheridan to exit the bus station, or do they go around the building?
It's not uniform in any sense, and largely depends on, you know, the number of buses that they have, or when they're, you know, when they're parking the buses. The ingress and egress that they have right now is sufficient for all of the buses that were parked, that would park there, either on the east side or the west side, to access and exit respectively on the east or south side. I can't tell you that they don't ever go around or attempt that U-turn around the north, but in those instances where they do it, they run the risk of knocking the fence over that has been knocked over before and had to be repaired by our applicant, and it's not necessary for effective use of the bus station. And they haven't objected to it, which runs further notice to the, to that fact.
Well, do Greyhound and whoever else uses the facility know about this application?
We haven't served any notice individually on the Greyhound Corporation, but the Union Bus Station's now had three different services of this, though, so they certainly know how their carriers would be impacted by a closure.
And I guess my next question has to do with the city lot. You may not have had city departments respond, but you've got, I think, a city response in the staff report. It seems to me that they've got a concern. Maybe Nick can help me with this, but.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right. If I can't, I mean, if you don't want to-
Nick, give us your name and address for the-
Nick Prefteix, 825 North Broadway Avenue. I own the properties. If you leave it the way it is, it's public access, that the city has built walls across and blocked, and is parking on inappropriately. I would like access to the back of my properties through the public right-of-way. What I'm asking to do is close the alley, which allows you to park on it, and there's no issue with the wall you've built across it. All we're doing is validating what you're already doing.
Okay.
Any other questions of me?
I don't have any. That helps me.
Okay.
Barbara Russell, any comment on, I mean, nothing happens physically if you close the alley. It's just, what's there on the site stays there on the site.
Absolutely. And to reiterate, the bus station, by its own actions, let the leases lapse on the adjacent properties. So, if they thought it was important to make that turn, they would have kept those leases so they could make them. They've had three notices, and they've said nothing and not shown up. So, I understand the comment, but they certainly don't seem to be concerned.
I have one question. Is the fence that the buses are running into, is that in that 10-foot alley, or is-
No, 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 no.
North of that?
No, it's not.
They cross over that 10-foot alley?
They cross, that's the problem. The 10-foot alley isn't wide enough for these buses to make the big arch, and the bus station owners apparently don't think it's an issue, but I think the drivers are just used to doing it over the years, so they still do it. But, no, my fences are on my property, so they're going beyond the alley and beyond their parcel that's on their east side to make this big arch, and taking out my fences on both sides.
So, it wouldn't protect your, it wouldn't protect your fence at all? It's just going away paper, is it still, could still run into your fence?
No, not if we close the alley.
Oh, okay.
No, if we close the alley, then they can't make the arch, because they're trying to drive, they're trying to drive buses through a 10-foot alley.
Oh, so then it wouldn't be allowed to even make that arch no more?
That is the point.
They would have to back back out onto it?
Well, but they drive off of Walker, and they drive in, and then they back out.
But they're back out into Walker, opposed to going around the building like they've been doing?
Then, but on the other side, they drive in and back out. It's only a few of them that come from Walker that try and make the arch, and that's, but also, with regard to the, I'll speak to the closure of the rest of the alley, it's just very unsafe. People, there's no way for cars to pass. We'd like to secure the backs of our buildings, because we've got vagrants sleeping back there who are going to get run over. It's just not a safe situation.
It's a tight alley, James. I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, I know it's a tight alley, but-
I squeezed my car in there.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I would describe it as a utility easement.
Yeah.
And it's going to stay a utility easement.
You know, I'm not a huge fan of closing these public rights away, but I do have some particular concern with respect to the city's parking lot there, and I wonder that if it would be possible for us to get some actual human person down here who can speak to this issue on behalf of the city, and tell us whether it creates any problems for the city to close these alleys, because if it doesn't, then that's fine with me, but I would like some, someone who could actually, rather than just default by not responding, whether we could actually have some influence.
If I can speak. I have alleys on other properties that we've closed, and I'm allowed to park on. I mean, 8th Street's a great example. We close an alley so we can park on it, because it's not used, but.
Russell?
Curtis?
Curtis Liggins with Public Works. Can we go, that's the slide we need to go to, that if, you could clarify for me the property that you own in the block?
Sure. Actually, I've got a, we have an overhead. Well, I don't think it's in the packet. I have the-
Okay. I can describe it for you. The parking garage I own. Everything from the bus station-
East.
To east to Hudson, I own. The parcel to the north of the bus station, I own. The only parcel that is privately owned that I don't own is the bus station, and then the parking lot is owned by the city. So, I own well in excess of 50% of the front end of the alley.
And we objected to the closing of the alley, and there's the ways that are extending north and south, and then I see on the removal, I turned from the page, that as well as though half just north of the bus station. Now, the buses go around the building, and they park diagonally on the east side, correct? So that, and you're, you have a fence on the east side of the bus station, but they still have room to park and maneuver the bus? Is that the fence you're saying they're striking?
No, I'm saying they're striking the fence, that one as well, but they're also striking the fence that's on the north side of their property, which they used to lease, which gave them enough room to make the arch. They let the lease go, and now there's only 10 feet, which is not large enough for a bus to go through.
And the area now that you fenced is used for parking?
Temporarily, during the Flintco construction.
Devon Construction or something, or, yeah. Devon Construction?
Devon Construction, yeah, Flintco, Devon, yes.
Now, just for clarity, there's a, there's a wall in the alleyway extending north and south, on the easement that's on the west, extending-
Where you see the two legs go up, the south edge of those legs. If you bring the arrow down, right-
Or maybe that next slide that had it blown up.
Okay. Oh. There you go. If you take the north line of that 10-foot alley, to the east end, that's a parking garage. Then you get into the concrete block wall that the city has built along that entire section of alley to cordon off its parking lot. So, the city has built a block wall that blocks both of those north alleys, and frankly, they're public right-of-way, so you've blocked the public right-of-way. And so, all we're saying is that we actually close those alleys so that you can legally park on them. park on them. And we're not talking about taking down walls, because once it's closed, you can have a wall.
And what proposal do you have that these alleyways would obstruct, have them open presently, like, I mean, talking about the north-south legs?
All I'm saying is, if you want them open, then open them. Take the wall down, quit parking on it, I want access through the public right-of-way to my buildings. What I'm saying, I'm just trying to clean this up. It's a mess. And what I'm asking you to do validates what you're already doing, and if you choose not to, I will be back to have you take down the walls and give me access to my buildings and not park there anymore.
As best I can know, that we didn't construct a wall. I think this historic wall has been there for quite a while.
Regardless, it's there.
But I mean, I'm just saying that for the...
It's there, it needs to go away.
And we only object to the closing of the north-south legs, and that is what I was understanding from Mr. Clowers.
But again, closing them allows you to park on them, as opposed to leaving them open. It's, it's like me trying to park in, if I go and park cars in the 20-foot alley north and just stop there, I'm gonna get towed away, aren't I? You're parking in a public right-of-way. All those cars should be towed. If you close it, then you can legally park there. All we're doing is validating the use.
I'm not sure I understand our objection.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, it seems to me that if what Mr. Prefteix is saying is accurate, that perhaps the city would choose to withdraw its objection, and I think if he would take time perhaps to meet with Dennis Clowers or his staff and explain to them what he is trying to explain to us, that perhaps that would get us a little further than this confusion is getting us.
If I can say one other thing too, my understanding too is in the process that once you close it, that you would close it, go to district court, there wouldn't be a right to have utilities or other things in the alley, those aisles. Is that, is that correct?
No, no, can't be.
No, you can't affect the right of...
No, but there's easements for the utilities.
That's not, that's different.
That's different. I can't vacate, I mean, I would have to pay to move the sewer lines, the water lines.
No, but I'm just saying, in the normal process, usually when someone applies to close something, that's the next step, is that if they want to do that so that they can cross those ways and build, you know, structures that span into...
Given the utilities that lace this and the utility easements through it, there's no way.
The fact that the city owns the middle part, they're not gonna go anything in a 20-foot wide...
Well, that was just my question earlier.
No, actually, it's five feet.
Well, that's right, because the city owns the middle part.
Yeah.
And we, I mean, that's my understanding, that we object to the closing of that.
So, let me ask a question. So if you close, if you close the north-south legs...
Yep.
What portion of that width, it looked like probably 20-foot width, those north-south legs, what, where is that wall located that, that's, the subject wall is located within that 20-foot area?
Okay, a little confusion.
On the east side, the east side of the line?
No, the wall goes across the entire south side.
Oh, the south side, okay.
And, but in fact, then on the west side, which would be the west side of that 20-foot, there, the city's concrete block wall continues north. On the east side is the back of my parking garage.
Okay, so then your parking, when you vacate those, don't half go to each?
No, this is a closure, it's not vacation.
Okay, closure.
We're closing the alley, we're not vacating the alley.
Close it.
But if there's no progressive...
I'm not gonna vote to close it if the city's objecting, so I think the option is for you to meet with city staff.
I've met with Jim Couch, I've met with Russell, I did not meet with Dennis.
That would be my request, if you could, if you could.
Meet with Dennis.
That would be my suggestion.
That would be mine.
I can't get you more than four votes.
Fine, defer it. I'll go meet with...
Dennis.
With Dennis.
Great.
I have a problem with it, neither do I, so...
Okay, great. I'll do exactly what you ask.
Thank you.
And on July 8th, I hope we are nine.
August 8th?
August 12th would be...
No, what is the date of the next meeting?
July 8th.
I will not be here.
August 12th?
Sign me up.
Okay, we'll continue at item 19 to...
How moved are we to... How moved are we to continue item to August 12th?
Second. Next to votes, continue to August 12th.
Item 20, item 20 is an ordinance amending chapter 59 of the Planning and Zoning Code, and this relates to a number of amendments addressing signs, and this derives from previous approvals that we had in relation to EMD signs over the entire city, and there was a request from the city council to consider just EMD signs in a different form within the various design districts. So this relates to a number of different regulations and guidelines regarding size, placement, and limitations of EMD signs in those districts. This is at the request of the city council. Susan and staff are here to answer any questions on that. I believe this has been discussed with the sign subcommittee, has been reviewed and approved by all of the various committees. I believe one of the committees declined to make a recommendation one way or the other, but...
And who was that?
Was that?
Susan's gonna tell us, because she remembers.
Is that Urban Design?
Urban Design Commission. I'm not sure I can specifically say why. They had a lot of discussion and just sort of chose that. They weren't sure about a few things, not real specific about what they were, didn't really have suggested changes, just decided to sort of take no action.
Before Susan launches into a presentation, if she was about to, no, I really think we ought to defer this matter until there are more of us than there are today. I just, I feel like after all that we have been through on this subject, and I know that there, it's a topic upon which virtually all of us have opinions, some of which are strongly held, and I just think we need to do that.
See, the strength of one when we are just five.
I know. I just wanna make a comment. You know, we did talk about this, I think we went to UDC Urban Development Committee twice with EMDs and then once with the downtown signs. Now you're seeing consolidated ordinances on this, they were kind of in two tracks, but since they're on the same timeframe now, we're moving them together. We, there are people in the community that are waiting on this sign ordinance, so we're hoping that it doesn't get delayed too much, because we are trying to accommodate those needs downtown. The Thunder specifically is one of the entities that came to us, so we are trying to facilitate that.
The Thunder primarily relates to item 21, which is, which amendments to chapter three, and that addresses the proposed downtown sign ordinance.
They would need both ordinances, though.
Both ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
There's another one coming up.
21 is next.
Right, and just, just a comment, Bob is on Bricktown Urban Design Committee and did vote in favor of both of these ordinances, so I'll speak for him today. Yes, I know.
Nonetheless, I would think I would wait to continue this honor until I join you.
Well, it doesn't matter whether she gets a second or not, because she votes against a, a counter motion, and we're in the same place.
Outset.
Jim, you want to say something?
Outset.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second to continue item 20 to July 8th, cast your votes. Same motion for item 21, Janice?
Second.
Okay, motion, second to continue item 21 to July 8th, cast your votes. We are now to item 22.
Item 22 was to introduce and set for public hearing an ordinance pertaining to amendments to chapter 59 of the zoning and planning code relating to automotive and equipment, cleaning and repairs, light equipment, and the intent is to prohibit this use in the northeast 23rd Street overlay district and declare an emergency.
And this is coming from Councilman Kelly. Mike has tried to get ahold of him, I don't know that they've had, I don't know if they've made contact.
It's coming in this 42nd, July...
August 12th, and I did have a conversation with Councilman Kelly, just because we ran into each other in the parking lot, and he's adamant that he would like to see this go forward.
I had a conversation with Councilman Kelly, he looked forward to talking to Mike, and he was, he was okay with talking with him, so...
Well, I told him, Mike was trying to reach him, he said he would call.
Yeah, and he was looking forward to it.
So do we want to introduce and set for August?
Outset.
Gave a motion, a second to introduce and set item 22 for August 12th, public hearing, cast your votes, and that's approved. The rest of the items, I think, are deferred. Planning Commission committees, Planning Commission members. This would normally be the day when we would have elections, we are minus four of our members. I would suggest we continue that to the July 8th meeting. What we need is a motion to waive the bylaws in order to allow us to do this at the next meeting, because the bylaws call for it to be done today. Is that right, Susan? Are you looking at me quizzically?
Is that stated in your bylaws, that you can waive your bylaws?
Yes. Or that you can waive them? I don't know. We've, we've done it...
Okay, I haven't seen them, so...
Well, I don't know that we have looked at that, but we've waived them four times so far that I'm aware of. So a motion, a second to waive the bylaws to allow the election to occur on July 8th, cast your votes, and that's approved. Planning Department, Russell?
Oh, I, I thought we were discussing...
We'll back up, okay. Planning Commission members?
I had to really swallow hard today on our vote on the Ironstone, and that was not necessarily so much because of the outcome, and being so few today, I was, I had it very much in mind that it was, it was maybe not a good day to parse things, but I really feel like we need to develop some sort of coherent policy on this topic and not put ourselves in the position of dealing with these things on a case-by-case basis. And I've thought, and will have to defer to people who can think better than I can on how we would go about doing that, whether it is some sort of a ratio between density and infrastructure, and we heard a lot today about if there were so many more cars, it would lower the service level to X or whatever. That may be all too much for me to sit down and figure out, but I really feel like most of us believe pretty strongly that development should not be permitted to run rampant ahead of infrastructure and services, but we have got to find some sort of coherent and consistent way to articulate that in policy form, I believe.
Well, we've long had a need for the ability to do regional traffic planning, for example. I mean, going back to when John Dugan was here, he tried to hire a regional traffic planner. I mean, we look at something like Ironstone, and we hear about the coming phases of adjacent neighborhoods and commercial tracks nearby soon to be developed, and that needs to be looked at as a whole. I mean, trying to decide whether there ought to be a traffic light at a neighborhood entrance does not address the problems that people encounter living in an area like that, where the development gets way ahead of the infrastructure. It's not just roads, I mean, that's principally what people see as infrastructure, because they think, okay, it's hard to get around, but there are other legitimate concerns, like can we get emergency services where they're needed and things like that, which is why we talk about connectivity, for example. We desperately need that kind of analytical ability within the city in order to deal rationally with some of these issues.
You know, I seconded the motion to deny that, basically with reluctance, because, I mean, that, that met every requirement of our ordinances and everything else. The only thing it didn't meet was interstructure. And the timing of that thing probably is appropriate also. The only thing is, you know, I think the big thing is, is the development is required to put in a certain amount of an interstructure anyway, and maybe that will facilitate, would facilitate the, the balance of 164th through there. So, you know, and I don't know how you legislate or, you know, put it in writing how these things are gonna have to work. I think that's the reason why we have to look at them case by case.
I think we need to find some way to, because I, you know, I can't, I can't justify us continuing to beat our head against this wall and just saying, oh, but we don't have what we need to make this decision more rationally. I think we've got to come up with a way to do it. There was an awful lot of sort of pulling the ladder up behind us that was involved in the, oh, but our neighborhood's gonna have more phases, so we don't want this neighborhood to develop. That's just, that's not gonna work. You know, we've got to come up with a way that make, takes into account current development and, and, you know, at a time like this when development is slowing down, who knows whether those other two neighborhoods will in fact open up their next phases or not, but, you know, I don't think we can take that possibility as a reason to justify not letting somebody else develop their property. We've got to come up with some kind of a policy that makes sense for us to apply to these things across the board.
Well, historically, it's been he who gets there first.
And that doesn't work.
And that's not, but we need better tools for area planning, because these things, the problems, the issues don't end at property lines of individual applicants.
I agree, I agree with that. I don't, I don't think we can leave it to, you know, who gets there first.
And that's what we've done with our sector planning, I think. I think we have, you know, that's the reason for all the sector planning, is so that we could have these things out in the future and have interstructure prior to development. I know out, out in the eastern part of the county, that is a really big problem, you know, that everything happens prior to interstructure, and we see that at what, Council and, and I Ford, or, yeah, I 40, you know, well, all that shopping center that went in there and the interstructure had to come later, and, you know, well, the traffic problem we got into that deal, and we're fixing to get into another one with the outlet and all.
Well, the only ward where infrastructure's gone ahead of development's Ward 5, and that's for entirely different set of reasons, but, and it's developed differently as a result. Well, point well taken, Janice, you're right. Planning Department, Russell, anything else?
As we complete the, as ACO completes their overall transportation model for the city, we will adapt that to what our needs are through the comprehensive planning process, but we have not had the data to do that, which is why we've moved towards those individual But we have not had the data to do that, which is why we've moved towards those individual traffic studies when there was, when we felt there was an issue. That's an interim policy, but we do not have that, that broader data to be able to, to do those kind of analyses. And everybody recognizes it's been a problem, but it's gonna take some time to overcome We have a study session at the next meeting. And other than that, I'd just say, I'd like to express condolences for J.J.'s family.
Development Services, Bob or Lance? Municipal Counselor? We've got some guests today. Anyone here who wants to talk to us? Or is this just fun?
Yeah, okay.
Well, happy to have you here. Any other business commissioners? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned.